We'll call the meeting to order. Those who are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. The first item on the agenda is public comments. If people want to go to the microphone and have questions or comments, if you give your name and whether you're a township resident or not. Are there any public comments?
My name is Arloa Kaiser. I'm a township resident. I'd like to say something about St. Mark's Lutheran Church, which has been purchased by Peace Neighborhood. And unfortunately, they keep stringing Auntie Yvonne's little free store. They tell them they're going to have to be out by the 4th of April. Now it's the 18th. I'm not sure what's going on there. And I'm not sure Peace Neighborhood is for our community. You know, they have these big ideas and that type of thing. So I know they say that, yes, if they own the property, they can do with whatever they want. But I feel sorry for all the people who come to Auntie Yvonne's because everything is free. Free donated food, clothing, and it's amazing how much goes out and how many people are in need. I would hope that maybe possibly the township could have a little discussion with the Peace Neighborhood. I'm not pleased, and I'm not sure that they have our best interest, our community, the people that they quote are supposed to be going to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Any other public comments? We have the consent agenda for the minutes of the March 21st work session and regular meeting. I did send some changes to Clerk Rowe. Statements and checks for the consent agenda.
So motion.
Support.
Motion, Eldridge, support. Was it you? Hunter?
I wasn't on mic, so I'll give it to you.
Questions or comments? Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Attorney report. Is there any general legal update, Mr. Winters?
Madam Chairperson, I mentioned to several members in the audience that are here from the Galt Village neighborhood that during the work session, my law partner had a very detailed report in regards to the status of the Galt Village demolition. And if, I'm not sure, how many people here tonight are in the Galt Village neighborhood? Okay, okay, great. The reason why I ask that question is because I don't need to tell any of you what's been going on over there for the last number of years. We've had everything in the world we've dealt with, from drug dealing, we've had prostitution, we've had vandalism, we've had people inside the parking lot doing things they should not be doing. We've had trash piled up behind the Galt Village shopping center. We've been to court now going on probably the last seven years and trying to actually get the property owner held accountable for what's going on in Galt Village. I say that because the township, we're not the owners of the property, and so we've been somewhat trying to, that's why it's taken as long as it has, because we've had different ownership during that time period of the Galt Village. There's been numerous promises made, promises broken repeatedly as to what was going to happen to Galt Village. Many of us up here on the board, I was born and raised in this area and know the Galt Village shopping center very, very well when it was a thriving shopping center, and many of you probably remember those days as well. But all that aside right now, here's where we're at. My law partner gave a very detailed presentation. The judge has signed all of the necessary orders to allow the township to proceed with the demolition of the shopping center. The cost of the demolition would be somewhere around $557,000 to take down the building. There's also going to be a cost incurred in regards to oversight during the demolition process. We have probably one of the most reputable contractors, at least in that field of work, Homrich Incorporated, has been selected as being the demolition contractor. That contract, which is currently being drafted and vetted, allows the contractor for up to 94 days to take down the building. And I think that some of you may have asked, you'd like to have some notice maybe in advance as to when that contract's going to begin. And I think we can encourage that to be posted on the township's website, as well as maybe at the Galt Village neighborhood meetings in regards to when that's going to occur. We've also have measures in place. There's probably about 600 pages worth of specifications and contract obligations that Homrich has to follow. So it's not just a matter of just imploding the building, obviously. It's going to come down in a very, very professional, very methodical manner. There are asbestos tiles inside there, and those have to be handled in some kind of a vacuum sealed environment. I may not have all the technical terms ready, but they will be handled and disposed of in a lawful manner in terms of whether they're going to be disposed of. The court did agree the township would be the party that would have the responsibility to ensure the safety during the time period when this demolition is occurring. The contractor is authorized to obtain all the utility disconnects that are necessary. We have measures for water mitigation or dust mitigation measures that will be in place and in the event that that's needed. So we're trying our best, anticipating anything that can possibly occur that would have a negative impact or could have one. We also have been in touch with the Washtenaw County Water Resource Commissioner's office. They are currently under contract with Orkin for rat and mice abatement throughout the township. And we've identified this area as one to pay close attention to during the demolition process. And they are going to be coming out to the property at least two weeks prior to the start of any demolition to make sure we can try to have as many areas, potential areas, that could be possibly for any kind of infestation, because we don't want any vermin inside Galt Village shopping center to go into the Galt Village proper. At the same time, I would say right now, the township recognizes that when the building is demolished, we don't just simply walk away from monitoring what's going on over there. This has been a long-term venture. It's involved three different circuit court judges. It's involved, again, seven years of our time as the township attorneys. It's probably involved 20 years at times of the township board's times over the years. Many board members that have already, and are no longer serving, also played a very integral role in trying to enforce accountability upon the different property owners who have held title to this property. So we do have authority under other orders to make sure that we, if we ever have to, if we have the need for onsite security, we have the right to also go ahead and require that. I don't know if I can answer every question that could possibly come up in regards to the particulars as to how the demolition is going to unfold. Jason, the planning director, is here. He's been involved in the court hearings. And Jason, you might add some more things from a safety standpoint that you might include, because Jason has attended every court hearing as a planning director in regards to some of the issues that we face. But as far as the timing, it will take place in the next 94 days, and we will try our best to make sure everybody in the Galt Village is aware as to when it's going to commence so there's no surprises, because I know that you have, some people have, you know, have other concerns about the timing and to make sure that every, you know, everybody is aware of that. Jason, can you add some more to what I may have not covered in regards to the precautions and measures that are going to be in place?
I think you did a pretty good job of touching on all of it. So the township's consultant that's been hired, SME, which is an engineering firm, but they also do environmental work, who's been with us since the beginning of this process, they've gone through painstakingly putting together a hazardous materials assessment of what might be inside of that building prior to it being demoed to understand what hazards might be involved in the structure itself, which is not uncommon for a building of its age. Typically, older buildings have the use of asbestos, which was common in the 1940s, 50s, and 60s in building material, and then also things like lead paint, which were used prior to 1975 or '76 when lead was outlawed and the use of paint. So they've gone through and they've done an assessment of the building to make sure that they've identified asbestos, cadmium, and lead contamination that might be there. And the biggest one that they found was asbestos, and it's in the floor tile for that building, which is not uncommon. And so what will happen is, is before the actual demolition of the building occurs, Homrich, who is an asbestos abatement, they're certified to do asbestos abatement, will go in using EPA standards and remove the asbestos from the building first. And all of that will take place in a, like Mr. Winters was saying, in like a vacuum sealed tent. And the people who are going to do that work will be wearing respirators, and none of that asbestos will get to leave that little environment that they create around it. Then once all of that waste is properly removed from the building, that's when the more prototypical demolition will start, where they'll start watering the outside of the building and then using a dozer to actually knock it in on itself and then start separating out the various materials into how they'll be recycled. So they'll obviously try to keep things like steel and metal that may have some value, but all the rest of the parts of the building will be hauled off to a landfill. And then during that time, there'll be measures in place, like a water truck, to make sure that there is no dust that escapes from the building itself as it's removed, and there'll be fencing in place around the perimeter day and night to make sure that people don't get access to the building as it's getting demolished. And then it's my understanding that they're not going to do it in one entire demo. They're going to move through sections of the building. So it's all going to come down during the same time period, but they're not going to do it all at once. They'll start with, let's say, a quarter of the building and get that removed and cleaned, and then they'll go to the next quarter and so on until the whole building is eliminated. So this is a very methodical process, very thought out. The EPA is already, which is the Environmental Protection Agency, the federal government's already looked at their methods for testing and agreed with their laboratory tests for asbestos sampling and how they were taken and what labs actually did the work to identify it. So it's painstakingly meticulous and a lot more involved than I even first thought for a building demolition. So they really have not left anything to question, but I'm happy to answer additional questions that you might have. Sure.
Are we in the seat?
That's sort of up to the chair lady, if you want to do questions and answers now.
Yeah, you can go. The only thing is, Jason, yes, sir, you can go there. We're also going to be retaining a professional onsite person that will oversee the contractor while they're there.
That's right.
On behalf of the residents and the township. So that's an independent person that will be there.
That's right. So SME, who is the company that did the initial waste and hazardous materials assessment, will also be retained to do the, watch Homrich do the demolition and watch the process of them removing the asbestos. So the township will have a third party through SME watching all of this and making reports of it daily so that we, you know, can keep good record of the building coming down as it comes down.
Hello, everyone. My name is Charles Cole. I live in the Galt Village. I live at 1165 J Avenue. I'm not ashamed of that at all. The question that I have is, from about, from where I stand to that screen is my back, my back door. It's in my backyard. I border with, I'm probably close as anybody that this demolition is going to affect. For years, I've been there for 12 years. For years, I've ran off people dumping. I've videotaped. Two times people were caught and fined where I videotaped them dumping stuff, and I called the Washtenaw County Sheriff. I've had some very interesting conversations with people walking through the alley back there, dumping as well and doing other things. My point, that why I'm here is, is I have 13 grandchildren, five children. If it doesn't affect me, the asbestos or other poisons that's in that building, it very well could affect my grandchildren or my children themselves. I certainly would hope that whoever tears this building down puts a barrier up, because right now, there's my privacy fence, which is a foot taller than the Galt Village brick privacy fence. So it looks like this. Mine, theirs. There's no way to keep dust from coming unless it's extensive water and they tear it down in six-foot sessions. I just don't know how that's going to happen without some of that dust or other poisons that's not known, lead or anything else. Without this being done in a timely, slow manner, it's going to have to be taken out slowly, in my opinion. I'm not an expert, but I'd just like to know, are there going to be a fence, a barrier put up?
No, I don't think there's going to be any kind of barrier that would put up. I mean, they're going to, basically, the asbestos is the main contaminant that's in there. All of that's going to be completely removed before they even get a bulldozer to touch the building. So everything that will be left, by the time Homrich really starts tearing the building down, will just be mundane building components like block, wood, metal, carpet, stuff that doesn't have any kind of contaminants. But dust control and mitigation, and then also, we're going to be doing air sampling during the entire thing to make sure there is nothing getting into the air. And then if there is any kind of air sampling where there's detected that there might be an issue, then, you know, work immediately shuts down. So we're, SME, again, the people who we've hired, who are environmental consultants, are going to watch Homrich, who is a very qualified demolition contractor surgically take this building down, is all I can say. So Homrich, just to give you an idea, they removed the press box off of U of M Stadium, you know, surgically with a dozer without disturbing any of the rest of the stadium. And they're currently working on Joe Louis, the old Joe Louis Arena, the asbestos abatement there. So these folks are probably right at the top of the list of demolition contractors in the state of Michigan. So we're very hopeful between having them on the team and SME on the team, that they're going to bring this thing down in like the most safe possible manner. And I know that, you know, living right next to it, you have concerns, and I can totally appreciate that. But what I would just say is that the township and its elected officials are doing absolutely everything by the book and managing as much, you know, they're managing this to where there's really not going to be a whole lot of, you know, by the, like I said, by the time the contractor gets involved, the hazardous material will already be in a landfill.
Okay. And last but least, I save this one for last, the rats. I don't know if it's been reported that there is no rats, but I'm telling you, there's My wife opened the back door probably a week or so ago, maybe, maybe a month ago. We've always had the little field mice. That was normal. Then there was the possums and the, not the possums, but, yeah, the possums and the woodchucks. They became more. But last month, there was a nice-sized rat, about the size of a baby rabbit, maybe bigger, on our garbage can, which sits in the back. We have a dog who goes nuts when there's something in our backyard. So we asked neighbors on both sides of us, Mary and Rob and Karen. The Korns live three doors down from us as well. Every single one of them has sightings of rats in the last six months? In the last six months? So the rats have gotten worse in the last six months. So I do feel that someone needs to address, it's not mice, these are rats. And the neighbor's dog, just a week ago, that's where the week ago came from, is Karen said that her dog killed a rat in the backyard. So she had to take him, get rabies shots and all that. But that's my main concern right there, is the rodents and the dust.
Understood. Yeah, the Washtenaw County Drain Commission and Orkin, who they use to help the township with the rat issue, were at Galt Village. Probably would have been the spring of last year when we did the first initial walkthrough of the building before starting really all of this additional work. And there was very little evidence of rats at that time or any kind of mice in the Galt Village building itself. And their determination was, is there wasn't enough of a food source left in that building really for anything to want to habitate in there. But the one thing they did say then, and they still say now, is they want to get out to Galt Village about two weeks ahead of the construction company showing up onsite to set up traps and abatement measures to try to mitigate it as best as possible before it gets disturbed, you know, ahead of the construction. Because a lot of times, the migrations happen because of earth moving or construction. Like road projects have a tendency to disperse rats and mice because they live underground predominantly. And so they want to get out ahead of it and get to Galt Village about two weeks ahead of scheduled contractor showing up onsite to set traps and allow it to be there for a few weeks prior to the building coming down to try to help with that issue. But again, when they were there about a year ago's time, there was very little evidence of vermin in the building itself, only because there just wasn't a food source there for them. And so that's what they had reported at that time. But I did tell the board earlier, before you had a chance to arrive, that I'm going to contact the county this week or beginning of next and have another update for them at the April 18th meeting, which is two weeks from now on, what their proposal is, is a part of that, that two-week lead time up to bringing the building down, what they anticipate doing, and what their game plan is going to be. And I can share that more with everyone that evening.
Jason, it may very well be, because Brenda sees and talks to Evan Pratt on a regular basis, it may very well be that, given what neighbors are saying, it may be necessary to be out there more, you know, sooner than the two weeks. So you don't want them to have any kind of, you know, opportunity to get more and more gestation cycles, et cetera. But anyways, I've been saying that it may be appropriate, given that we have a 94-day window, to take down the building, to have someone out there before, even sooner. So Brenda, as a supervisor, can be in touch with the Evan Pratt, who's the Water Resource Commissioner, and let him know that at least from the neighbor's standpoint, they're seeing rats right now as opposed to waiting till the two weeks before the demolition begins.
And we can get an update from him also, because Evan is baiting rats in the storm drain. So we also know that Miller Pipeline is doing the gas replacement project in Galt Village. And they started, so that could be also what you're, what's bringing them up, if you will. So we will contact Evan. Evan actually reached out to us last week, and he said he wanted to make sure that we remember that he wanted to go have Orkin go out and set some snap traps and monitor them for a couple of weeks prior to demolition. So he'll go out there right away. He just sent this email last week, so he's aware of it and wants to watch that as well. So every time we get a concern about, they call them vermin, but they're rats.
They're rats.
I mean, I just give them a fancy word. But every time there's a sighting, they actually have Orkin go out in the township and look at them. So now that we heard, like Doug said, we heard what you said this evening, and so we can report it to them and have them go out now or not today, but this week maybe still, and get right on it.
Hi, I'm Tamara LeCoq. My question is, once that building is down, what used to be the old key barge you're talking about?
Yes.
Well, I live, where we live is right behind the dry cleaners and...
Can you talk into, I'm sorry?
Yeah, but I have a question.
I think it'll go down. There you go.
Once the building is completely down, is there going to be any kind of wall or, like on the area that we live, the wall is only this high?
They're going to leave the existing retaining wall that's going to stay. And prior to the new owner, they actually had them reinforce it and, because it was falling.
Well, I know, like on the Coleman side, they put up something. They redid that section, but where we live, they have not done anything. And I was just wondering, is there going to be any kind of noise? We're going to get all that noise straight. Once that building's gone, we're going to hear that from the freeway. And I was just wondering, is there anything planned for that down the line or not?
We're directly behind the dry cleaners.
Yeah, I'm looking at your... Not to mention, we can hear everything, all the guys in their cars and everything. Just, so I was just wondering, that, the wall from the freeway, it stops right after Coleman? Little bit after Coleman, I think. So there isn't anything there? Not at the freeway or behind our homes either?
Yeah.
I mean, along Coleman, they build a nice wall.
They stopped right after Coleman. Oh, yeah, the new one, yeah.
We didn't have anything in the bid for that.
No, I mean, this is...
It's not our property. That's part of the problem.
Right, yeah, and we haven't, that hasn't, we haven't got that far.
We can look at it. We can look at it and get back with you. We never thought about, I never thought about that. It's a good point. So we could, because there could be tree, so the sound wall doesn't go, I mean, it only goes to, it doesn't go all the way down?
No.
On the expressway?
It stops a little bit after... It stops a little bit after Coleman.
Yeah. So we could plant trees there, too. That would help with the sound. Like, they call it a living fence. I don't know. We'll have someone look at it to see.
Who put that sound wall up in the first place?
The question is, who put the sound wall up in the first place? MDOT, I guess? How many years ago was that? It was, what, 30 years? Was it about 30 years ago, I think?
Uh, wasn't that?
Yeah. Oh, you mean the one behind Galt Village or the sound wall off of 94?
Sound wall.
The sound wall was, I think, I'm not sure.
It's probably MDOT.
Yeah.
I would think it would be MDOT.
For long time. So that's a good point. Thank you. Yeah. And we'll keep people updated along, that's most affected on it. We can give them a time, we can mail or hand-deliver a time schedule so everyone's informed. And then the SME contact person will be the representative for the people and for the township. So that will be a direct contact if you have issues, and they'll be onsite daily. daily, is what the proposal was. The original takedown was, I think, nine or 10 days, and now it's 94. So it's going to be a slower process than we thought from the beginning, but I think that makes it better and safer.
Hi, my name is Charles Corn, and I'm 1195J. I have an autistic son, so I'm very concerned about the rats, the dust, and everything in general. Do we, do we need to cover up anything in our backyards when they're doing this for the dust? Or, I mean, I know they say they're going to water it down, but we're still going to get the dust.
I know they've taken houses down right next to each other like this, in subdivisions. I mean, literally houses was here and a house was here. And they did it very successfully. Liberty Square backed up to a whole lot of residents that were... So I do know, a professional company knows how to do that, but we will make sure, and these issues were raised as we were doing the bids too, and, but we'll make sure that we have those issues addressed by our, our person on site as well as the company that's taking it down. I like the idea that they're just doing a section at a time.
Yes.
And they're supposed to grab it and it falls forward, it doesn't...
Right. And also the wall that she was talking about, our cement walls, they're deteriorating. I have this much of my top off, you know, it had like a crown on them, I don't have that anymore. I mean, so we need to do something. I mean, I don't know what to say because I'm not in that field or anything like that, but we need, you know, we're just concerned, that's all.
All right.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you, thank you all for coming out, that's great. And we'll make sure we follow up.
I'd like to know how much percentage of that building has asbestos in it? And if there's, if there's a floor plan with asbestos showing it, I'd like to see that.
Would you mind going to the microphone, although I heard you, which is unusual, but the person that takes the minutes isn't here.
I'd like to know what percentage of the building has asbestos in it?
Floor tile is what I heard you say.
It is, yeah, it's the mastic actually that holds the floor tile to the floor, so it's actually the glue that contains the asbestos. I know, I can't speak to the exact percentage of the asbestos that's in the building, I just know that all of it resides in the floor tile and the mastic. But there is a, the hazardous materials assessment is available at the clerk's office anytime for, for you to view, and it does have a very good summary page right at the beginning that breaks down in layman's terms what they found and how they plan on mitigating it.
Just one more thing, will we be informed what section is coming down first? Like what area are they starting on the corner?
When we get a schedule, like, this is the first step, is to award the contract for the dollar amount.
Oh, okay.
So we're doing that, and then we'll get a schedule and SME will be the representative, and we can mail that out to people, or drop it, because I'm not sure how well the post office does these days, but, absolutely, yeah.
My name is Arloa Kaiser, and the old Kmart building had ceramic floor tile. Is there asbestos in that floor tile? I know the building is gone, but there was some brown tile that is still there. Are they going to check that for?
That's a separate owner, and that was demolished previously.
Well, my question is...
There should not be any. We, we should have the paperwork on that because...
Well, no, there is brown tile there, but my question is, when the old Kmart building was taken down, was that in, taken into consideration, the asbestos and all that kind of stuff? I don't know that, but that would be a concern to check what's there, to make sure that everything is safe.
And gone, yeah.
And gone, yes, because the tile is still there.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. We can find out, because they did the demolition and had to file the paperwork with the state of Michigan and dispose of the asbestos. It's, I mean, even when we, at the community center, we had those same kind of tiles that were glued down, and we had to go through the same process of abating them. If it was after a certain year, then you have to make sure they're abated properly and documented.
Okay.
So we'll see if we can find out.
Blue for thought, there are these ceramic, brown ceramic tile there that I'm assuming were glued to the cement, so to look into it.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser.
Hi, my name is Sharon Lee, I live in the township. Got two quick questions. First, did they make a decision on the signage? They did? Did I miss that? I was late.
They, the judge, well, I'm not the, Mr. Winters, do you want to explain?
Yes, they had a hearing on that last Friday, and the judge ordered the face signs to come down, but is going to at least leave in place right now the pole without prejudice for the township to return back to court. So the, the structural engineers did not determine that they were in danger of, of collapse, but the face signs are, and those will be coming off. And we'll wait and see when it's all said and done, if we need to go back to court on the pole itself. She left the door open for our return to bring that issue up again. So face signs come down, the pole will be there until we, unless the court determines at some point in time that it can come down as well.
Okay, thank you. And second, thank you very much, trustee Stan Aldridge. They fixed the fencing, and I appreciate it very much, it looks beautiful. Thank you.
All right, any, any other attorney updates?
No.
All right. Under new business, we have the Resolution 2023-03, which is authorizing the division of the platted lots in Watsonia Park subdivision. Quick Row?
I have Resolution 2023-03, the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Resolution Regarding the Division of a Platted Lot. Resolution authorizing the division of platted lots in Watsonia Park subdivision. Whereas the owner of lots 173 to 186, lots 408 to 441, including vacated Edgewood Ave, Beverly Ave, and vacated alleyway of Watsonia Park subdivision, has made a request to change lot boundaries as previously approved and recorded. Whereas the Township Ordinance Number 2000-243, Article 9, Section 11.01 states that, upon the filing of a petition by the owner or owners of all interested therein with the Township Board, the platted lots, outlots, or parcels of land in existing recorded plats may be partitioned or divided upon the resolution of the Township Board into not more than four parts, each of which shall, in regard to width, depth, and area, conform to the terms and provisions of the Charter Township of Ypsilanti zoning ordinance as amended. And whereas the Township Planning Director has reviewed the division and confirmed that the resulting parcels meet the minimum requirements for lot size and road frontage as set forth by Section 2000 of the Township Zoning Ordinance, therefore be resolved that the revised property descriptions are as approved as follows. There are two legal descriptions attached for parcel A and B. I would so move the resolution.
Motion, Joe Rowe?
So move.
Support?
Support.
Support, Hunter?
Thank you.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is request to approve the creation, posting, and filling of maintenance superintendent position within the Teamsters Union.
So move Peterson?
Support.
Motion Peterson, support Aldridge. This is filling a position that's been vacant and reposting it as a combined position, so we will be adding back another union, Teamster Union position. Questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three is a request to not fund the nationwide OBR account and to reinstate the employer employee social security tax for temporary seasonal and commission employees.
So move.
Support.
Motion Rowe, support Aldridge. This was discussed in the work session. Questions or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four is Resolution 2023-04, which is the establishment of water and sewer subsidy income level.
So move.
Quick Row?
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Thank you, Debbie, for supporting my... All right, I have Resolution 2023-04, the establishment of water and sewer subsidy income levels. Whereas Ypsilanti Township has established a water and sewer bill subsidy program for the township citizens of limited income. And whereas Ypsilanti Township adopts the following guidelines for supervisor's office to implement. The guidelines shall include but not be limited to the specific income and assets, asset levels of the claimant and all persons residing in the household filed in the immediately preceding year. One, all household income cannot exceed 30% of the median income for Ann Arbor or Washtenaw County as published annually by the Michigan State Housing Development Authority for Section 8 housing vouchers. The most recently available guideline shall be used by the supervisor's office. Two, a copy of the claimant's completed and signed federal income tax return if required to file and/or Michigan homestead property tax credit claim or a 1040CR, and/or social security statement for the prior year must be submitted for the application to be considered. Additionally, a copy of the prior year federal income tax return for any other occupant of the homestead is required. Three, applicants are requested to blackout all references to social security numbers prior to submitting necessary paperwork. Four, water and sewer subsidies may be applied for each year if a subsidy is granted, it is for one year only. Five, applicants must reside in the Charter Township of Ypsilanti and be the property owner. Verification of this shall be completed when application is submitted. Six, the subsidy shall show on the applicant, applicant's Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority Bill as a $40 credit. Now therefore be resolved that the supervisor's office shall follow the stated, above stated policy in granting and denying subsidies unless the supervisor determines there are substantial and compelling reasons why there should be a deviation from the policy, and these are communicated in writing to the claimant. I would so move the resolution.
Support.
Motion Rowe, support Swanson to approve the increase in the level of subsidy for water and sewer bills. It was $20 for people who qualified, and that was the same, it hasn't changed since 2017, but yet the water and sewer bills have gone up. So this makes up $40 for every two months of a bill, so hope to help people with this and just keeps, kind of keeps it in line with the increase in cost of utilities and water and sewer. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the request to pay all appointed board members and commissioners a $75 stipend in, in the amount, the budgeted amount of $5,000 in line item 101, 101, 704, 000 contingent upon the budget amendment.
So move Peterson?
Support.
So the reason this is on the board is we didn't realize that people who were on appointed committees were not getting paid a stipend for the AA, ATA, for example, Huron River Watershed, Washtenaw Area Transportation Committee, and Washtenaw Regional Recycling Management. So other committees were Yucca, gets paid a stipend, but these didn't, we wanted to make it fair to everyone who volunteered to be on a board or commission. Questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a request to approve the proposal from Midwestern Consultants to provide a drone survey in the amount of $64,000, which is budgeted upon approval of a budget amendment.
So, support.
We have a motion and support, is there discussion?
Yes, I'd like to have a discussion.
Can you go to the microphone?
What exactly is this drone supposed to do? Where is it going to survey? What's it surveying?
It's going around the lake.
Is it supposed to give you, what, what information are they going to, I mean, for $65,000 is a lot of money, you can run a helicopter for $20,000 and take a bunch of pictures and you're going to get the same thing. Seems like an awful lot of money.
Yeah. We had a presentation and discussion in the work session, but it will give us for the survey, we're looking at completing the loop around the lake, we're applying for a grant for that. This will also show us the conditions of the embankment and the soil that everyone's having issues with. I don't know if you remember when Grove Road collapsed?
Yeah, well, you know, I'm a member...
And that caused a lot of the actual embankment to wash away, so we're applying for grants for that as well.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm a member of Flying Pilgrims Model Airplane Club, and we have several drones that take pictures and whatnot, and I'm very familiar with this. Unless this company can provide really detailed pictures, this really not going to do you much good. Unless they're doing some, some kind of, they've got more instruments other than a camera on, onboard. So I would look into that, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, it, it will prepare a survey and a schematic design all the way around the lake, so maybe it does do more than just fly.
Well, more than...
And take pictures, it's supposed to give depth and topography and measurements and...
Well, are they going to provide you with a map?
Yes, yes. And then we use that map to apply for grants to fund it. Oh, thank you. Madam Supervisor, can I say one other thing?
When we had the presentation today, one of the things they also told us was that if, for the grant that this will be part of, like, we always have to have in-kind contributions, so some of this will go towards our in-kind contribution, but that was another thing that was mentioned.
All right. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven is request to approve design engineering by Ben Mustering, Midwestern Consultant Stantec for the North Bay Park Accessibility Improvement Study in the amount of $9,962 budgeted in line item 213, 753, 801, 500, contingent upon approval of the budget amendment.
So move Peterson?
Support. We have a motion and support, and this too is required in order to submit for grants, we have to have these kind of preliminary engineering studies, and then we can tee up for an actual grant, actually multiple grants is what was explained to us. We have a motion and support, discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Budget amendment number four, Quick Row?
All right, I have budget amendment number four. I would move to increase the general fund budget by $672,399 to $13,543 and $374 and approve the line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the bike sidewalk rec and road fund budget by $73,963 to $3,408,460 and approve the line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the environmental services fund budget by $80,000 to $3,824,633 and approve the line item changes as outlined. And move to increase the 14B District Court Fund budget by $2,125 to $1,721,709 and approve the line item changes as outlined. These budget amendments are for many of the things that we went over and, and have just voted on, including the Galt Village, a few PTO payouts. We're adding extra chipping services that Supervisor Sumbo can elaborate a little bit more on. And, did I miss anything? I think that's it. I'd so move the budget amendment.
Support.
Motion by Rowe, support by Aldridge to approve the budget amendment. So $655,500 is for the demolition and the contractual oversight for the Galt Village demolition, so that's the biggest amount. The next biggest amount would be the $80,000 in additional... So that's the biggest amount. The next biggest amount would be the 80,000 in additional chipping service. We have two teams from Ypsi Township that are manually doing it, and then we have a professional services that actually has large grapplers that can put it into the chipper instead of manually doing it. And they are helping us to complete the branch cleanup. It, it was enormous from the last storm. So they're probably 85% done. And every time we think it's gonna get done this week, the weather, like we had today and tomorrow, is supposed to be really bad weather as well. So hopefully we'll get it done. I'm not gonna give a date because we don't know. But having a professional tree service that actually has the equipment is a lot better way to doing it than pulling it and doing it by our employees who have done a great job at that. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under authorization and bids, we have the request to approve the proposal from Randall Mesh Arca for township photography services.
Madam Chair, we discussed this briefly in the work session, too. Our township has been working. We, you guys can see, we've done some rebranding. We've got our new logo, and we're also working on redoing our website. Hopefully, we'll go live with that this year, but our website committee felt very strongly that we don't have, you know, many professional pictures that we're able to highlight and just exemplify the beautiful community that we live in. And so this will cover that, as well as being able to attend events that happen in the township, just to promote other folks to come into our community and see where a great place it is to live and, and grow. So.
We have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a request to accept the proposal from Uma Enterprises for air dial service.
So move.
Support. We have a motion in support to approve this. This is for the emergency call boxes at each of the fire stations and an alarm system at the hydro station. So they're replacing new technology, or old technology with new technology, and it's actually a little bit cheaper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is request to seek bids for the construction services for inspection of the spillway gates and concrete repairs at the hydro station.
Support.
Motion Aldridge, support Rowe. These bids will come back to the board for formal approval. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's no other business, and a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
So move. Motion, Gloria Peterson and supported Hunter at 7:53. Thank you, everyone, for going. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have everyone's address, and we'll make sure that you are updated, and we'll take your concerns to the contractor and the person that we hired to oversee it. So thank you all for coming out. We greatly appreciate it.